Let's all stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Daley?
Here.
Vice President Hedlund?
Here.
Trustee Clements?
Here.
Trustee McNaul?
Here.
Trustee Parr?
Here. Thank you. Happy New Year to everybody. Our next meeting is Tuesday, January 19th, 7:00 PM, right here in the auditorium small gym. And just for my board colleagues, John will be leading that meeting and I will not be here or be available. So we turn the reins over to John. Okay, Dr. Banante. Sorry.
Want to lose Sean there? Good evening and Happy New Year to everyone. It's great to see you again. I hope you had a restful holiday. It's been a busy return to school this week for those of us who are on campus. And some great news on the, on one front of our continued management of the COVID response. And that's that we've been able to secure access to rapid testing from the Putnam County Department of Health and rapid tests, and we received those today. So we actually have those in hand now. And you may recall that over the last few months, I think I've spoken several times about the importance of testing long-term, especially as we get into this part of the school year, in being able to effectively manage and navigate, remaining open if we were able to. And I'm glad now to see that we have those tests in hand. We were anticipating that for about a month now, so it's happened now. It's a blessing and a curse because the logistics behind facilitating testing is something that we now have to sort through. There are some districts in our region who are beginning, who have begun to do this. So we have a good base to work from. But of course, informing our community of what this is going to entail and what this looks like and how we're going to go about it is something that we are going to figure out over these next few days. And communicate to our community as a whole and take steps to implement now a testing program. And my hope is that we can bridge this gap between January, or from January through February, seeing that as probably the most critical juncture, because it's a time where we generally have increased illness in the community anyway, whether it be the flu or just common cold. We can see that certainly the rates of COVID infection are also increasing throughout Putnam County right now. And that's consistent with what we're seeing going on obviously nationally or reading about nationally. So having access to rapid testing, I do think, will really serve two purposes. One is a practical one. It will help us establish that our community rate of infection is lower than whatever rate of infection we see more broadly, hopefully that will occur. And two, I think that there's a high level of anxiety right now that's coming with, you know, seeing now about another strain of the virus, again, seeing the community rate of transmission at a county level continuing to increase. So hopefully this will, I'll say, take the temperature down a little bit as long as the results are what we would anticipate them to be, which is low because that's what's been demonstrated in many other schools as they've implemented testing programs. So that's good news for us. I'll have more to report on that in two weeks from now as we begin to put a testing program set up. I do believe that with this, though, that we'll be able to pull this together fairly quickly. It's our, it's our top priority that this will then allow us to open schools as anticipated on Monday of next week. And again, physically open our schools to students. Obviously, instruction is being facilitated remotely right now. And ideally, again, allow us to remain physically open for students over the course of the next two months. I, we will have disruptions. I think that's unavoidable. But I do think having the testing program in place, and there's some subtle changes we're going to recommend and make to our process that we're going to communicate tomorrow to our community. But the most significant one is the notification that we're going to begin to put a testing program in place. So with that, I'll pause just to see if there's any questions related to COVID before I proceed.
How many tests did you get and will they be continually coming after we, you know, after we use them?
So right now, we received 250 tests, which is slightly more than what's needed to test 20% of our student and staff population, which is a key benchmark that's being used in, by other schools that are implementing testing programs. And it's tied to what the testing requirements were stated to be by the New York State Department of Health, should we end up in a designated zone, micro cluster zone. So with that, I was just referring back to that document today because while we haven't been designated as a micro cluster zone, could we implement a testing program that essentially would be consistent with, as if we were? And hold that standard? Because I think there's, Ivy even expressed concerns about how the zone designations have changed over the last two months. Well, what if we were to just essentially treat ourselves as if we were an orange zone? Because at one point, you know, we are beyond whatever at one point that infection rate was, which would be testing about 10% of our students every other week, and staff, every other week. Which with 200 tests, we could do that for the next, over the course of the next two to four weeks. We would then need to replenish the tests that we have. And the Department of Health has indicated to me that if we were to put in an order now, we would likely have those tests replenished in time to continue with a testing regimen that we're beginning to explore. Now, we haven't submitted that order yet. School districts have to do that directly, while these tests came from the Department of Health. So there's a process in even requesting the tests that we have to go through. So we'll begin to do that in the next day or two.
Right, but likely to get them?
Yeah.
Is hard.
Yep. I sat with it. Prior to yesterday, the issue, Margaret, for me, was, well, I may have these tests, but if we are designated as a zone two weeks from now, well, I'm going to want to hold on to them until such time, right? Because in order to remain open, we have to be facilitating a testing program. So I don't want to use them if it's going to get in my way of keeping schools open two weeks from now. Like, well intended, but that's not going to help us. But again, I think we can stagger this in a way where we're testing a cross-section of individuals on a periodic basis and simultaneously requesting more tests and proceeding in that manner. And again, my hope is to bridge this gap for these next two months because if you were to look back historically, these are the next two months where we have the greatest level of illness. If we're to measure that by absenteeism, both for students and for staff in the preceding three years. So that's no surprise, right? The winter months usually bring illness in and of itself. So hopefully this helps mitigate, or temper, if you will, the disruptions that we will have over, over these next couple of months.
So the plan is to go ahead and start the testing?
Yes.
Even though we haven't been designated?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And my hope would be to, I think next week would be ambitious, but the week following is likely realistic. So that would be around Martin Luther King Day, or the days that follow. One of the issues we're going to run into is when do we do the testing specifically? And how that's facilitated and whether or not we can have school open while we're doing such. So schools who are implementing testing programs have, you know, every school's different. So their, their level of staffing is different, their level of community. Some schools have community-based health clinics already in the school. We do not. So those are all variables that we kind of have to, that we have to sort through to determine when the most appropriate time is for testing. Of course, if you're testing and then someone is test positive, right? You don't, you want to have a very contained environment where, where you're facilitating testing. So the easiest thing would be to call students down periodically throughout the day, right, and test. But in the event that there's a, someone who's testing, who's asymptomatic but test positive, well, now we have a classroom that had that student inside of it. That creates, you know, an issue potentially there. So, you know, my, I'm still sitting with that. I have to meet with Catherine O'Hara and Jenny Shelters tomorrow just to go through, hear their thoughts. Dr. Corsaro, our liaison at the Department of Health, as we all set this up. So there are, there's a lot of, as you've heard me say before, a lot of nuance to how we go about making these decisions, or examining as we're making these decisions. But this is a good problem to have, I'll say right now, considering everything else going on.
And just a quick, on the back end of the testing, does the state do the, the assessment of whether the tests are, like, who does the process, processing?
So the tests are processed right here. These are rapid tests. So we'll, we'll receive a result immediately. So this will be a sit and wait service for families. So, you know, if you were to bring your child in or children in to be tested, you would sign a consent form. You would provide us with some additional information for our reporting to the state. And then you would have, it's a nasal swab. The test is then, so it's administered and then it's begun to run. Families would wait likely in their car or some other designated area. And we would inform you of the results before you left. The, we are responsible for reporting all positive tests to New York State. So there's a record-keeping component there that we just have to familiarize ourselves with. There is a state portal, a secure portal for, for data entry. Again, so there's a clerical component to this. So again, we're, we're essentially running in some ways a mini clinic. And we're subjected to all the rules and the regulations that come with that. So again, we have to make sure we're up to speed on, making sure that we're doing this right and that we're honoring family privacy as we're doing so. So again, the logistics of it are all, all need to be sorted through. But you got the results immediately.
Okay. That was a silly question. I apologize.
No, it's okay.
And I'm assuming that part of the, what you're working through is how, who do we pick and how?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to ask the question, like, could you volunteer?
So you could, some districts, so as Margaret's pointing out, they're referring to that there are requirements for testing when you're in a designated zone. And part of that is a random sampling of students and staff. And you cannot test any one individual a second time before you've tested someone a first time. So you have to continually be, let's just say you have a master list. You have to be continually working through and revisiting that master list. When, those rules don't necessarily apply when you're doing a vol, an initial testing program that's not necessarily required. But I do think that's a best practice. So we want to ideally set this up as if we were doing it like we're going to be, we may be required to do it just a few weeks from now, or it could be a few days from now. We don't know. And I think, again, when trying to convey to the community that our schools are safe and that the spread within our schools is low, and again, I'm hopeful that that's what we would see. Then that should really be a true cross-section of our school community, inclusive of, you know, all the various staff that we have and how they're interacting with our campus community, as well as a good cross-section of our student body, K-12 as well. So, you know, how we facilitate and choose and then is something that we have to think through. But other districts, as they've done their first wave of testing, several have just made it voluntary to start, just to get it off the ground, you know. So the first day or two, they're doing a voluntary testing. So we're, we're thinking through what's the best way to set that up. Of course, to do, just to test our process, we're going to need some volunteers, right? So just to make sure we're, because we're likely to have to implement some reservation system or something to that extent, because we only have right now Ms. Shelters and Ms. O'Hara who, who can facilitate the testing. So we want to get a sense of, well, how long does it actually take to come inside the school, fill out the forms, do a swab, run the test, go back out, notify the family? Not that Catherine and Jenny would be doing that part. So we need to go through this a little bit with our own staff. But we'll cross them off the list, right? They've now been tested and we'll move on or get our process ready for, for the next wave.
Awesome. Good. Thank you very much.
Yep.
I'd imagine you could find some community volunteer?
I am sure we would. Yes, 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 definitely. Anything else on the testing note? As I mentioned, there, there will be an update provided to the community tomorrow that includes some other slight changes to our, our process here. We are making a change to the daily health screener that we want to draw families' attention to and our staff's attention to. We also do, we want to make sure families who have potentially experienced a positive COVID case, informally, families have done a good job of notifying of that, us of such things. We, we would like to remain attuned to that because it just gives us a help anecdotally to get a sense of how many of our families are, may have been impacted in these previous two weeks while we have been on break. And lastly, I just wanted to mention, this is not in the update. I had my weekly call with the Department of Health and the other county superintendents yesterday, and we spoke of the vaccination process. And Shanna Siegel, who's our rep with the Department of Health, shared just some of her observations and experience for how the facilitation is going, not just at a county level, but regionally. And, you know, without getting into elaborate specifics, you know, it was really illustrative of the, the issues and the complexity of a vaccine distribution schedule and the way that it's been designed by New York. And I know there's conflicting, you know, there's probably other, other ways to go about it. But also the sensitivity of the vaccination itself and limitations because, you know, of how it has to be maintained. And I, it's illustrative and it was good to hear. But it also, I had to step back for a minute and say, you know, I, I don't foresee the vaccination making its way to our school staff anytime soon. I was really hopeful that February would maybe be the beginnings of getting our staff vaccinated. But listening to what the Department of Health was sharing yesterday, and obviously we're reading some things in the newspaper as well, that may be a bit ambitious. Say, if I'm wrong, great. But, you know, I did have in the back of my mind this hope that February, we would begin to start to see some of our staff becoming vaccinated. And I, I just don't think that's realistic, given what I'm hearing and how the vaccine's being distributed. Or some of the logistical issues that our local health departments or regional hub, which is at West Chester Medical, are encountering. And Shanna made a great point about, you know, our, our regional hospitals have been tasked with the distribution of the vaccination. Yet our hospitals right now are the busiest places. So to simultaneously be, I'm sure, you know, prioritizing care for, you know, all sorts of things that are going on in a, in a hospital, not just COVID-related matters. And then also to facilitate a vaccine distribution plan is, you know, I think we can understand, well-intended, but given the time of the year right now, pretty, it presents its own challenges and obstacles. So I just wanted to mention that. But again, we're just going to keep at it and we've had good success up to this point this school year, I think. And I, I think some, some things are coming together right now that we've been working on over the previous three months that are going to be helpful. And we look forward to having our students and staff back on, many of our staff are on campus this week, but our students as well on campus next week.
Teachers were added to the, to the earlier list though, weren't they? Like, within the last couple of days?
They were.
They were.
Yeah, so school staff. And sometimes, Margaret, I think recently, there was an initial distribution schedule that referred to phases and now that has shifted. So, excuse me, but school staff were listed in phase, were moved into phase two, which is good. But we're still in the early stages of phase one. And phase one was a multiple week.
I think there was 1A, 1B, 1C.
Correct. Yes, yes. And that's what was, that's the change I'm noting in how, I believe, our school staff are now listed in 1C.
Yeah, I think they were moved up.
Whereas initially in a document I had viewed, it was phase two, but now it's 1C. We're still in 1A. And 1A's been going on for, for some time and well. So, you know, that's, that's part of the, part of the issue attached to that is the vaccine is being distributed to hospitals, but also at times to Departments of, Department of Health, respectively. And then at other times, other health-based, other clinics. So each of whom have unequal information on how to contact the groups that have been designated. Not to get too far in the weeds on this, but who have been designated as eligible for the vaccination. So you can imagine the Department of Health has access to a different level of information than a regional, than West Chester Medical's going to have. Yet West Chester Medical serves as the regional hub for however many counties. You know, we're working with primary or first responders that some of whom work on a county level, some of whom work on a state level, some of whom work on a, on a local level. So, you know, again, this was just some of what we were getting into yesterday that illustrates the logistical challenges with trying to even notify those who may be eligible for a vaccination when they have them. And of course, Nate, you've read about the restrictions that are tied to the distribution and the penalties for distributing to those who aren't on. So you're reading now these stories about, you know, an entity that may have 1,000 doses, but can only get 600 people to commit. And then they have 400 doses, but they're not able to administer them. Anybody, because you can't do an all-call, you know, for anybody who may want to come in and get one of the remaining doses, you, you're limited to the groups that are on the schedule. So again, these were all the things we were discussing yesterday that, just give me a bit pause in thinking that we're going to be able to get to 1C quickly. I don't know.
Bill?
Yes.
Is it, is it possible that our, here we go. Is it possible that our, our, our school nurses will be able to access the vaccine since they're healthcare workers and I'm just curious to know?
Yes. Our school, that's a great question, Sean. Our school nurses were notified this week that they do have and are eligible for the vaccine. And I know Catherine and Jenny specifically were notified that they are eligible and the specific location where they could go to, to be vaccinated, if that was something that they chose to do. So that's good news for them.
And us?
Yes, and for us as well. Thank you.
Any questions, more questions, COVID update questions? Thank you, Dr. Banante.
Thank you. So you'll, you'll see more from that, from me through our more formal channels in the, in the days to come as we begin to set that up. And I, Jenna, I'm just reminded, I wanted to mention that, you know, at these kind of strategic turning points, we are reconvening the school reopening task force core team, our leadership team that worked through the summer to sit with this information, no different than you are right now. So we scheduled that meeting for Friday where we have our PTA leadership, our liaison, Judy with the, with the town, Judy Farrell, as well as our union leadership internally. So just to give, create our own space to talk through some of these matters internally and with our, some of our community partners. So I just wanted to mention that we're continuing to utilize that structure that we set up at the start of the school year.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
Budget time.
Yeah, so we have a brief budget presentation for this evening. And I did provide you with a copy of the presentation just as we begin to reown our stuff. I didn't, I didn't know if everybody would have their laptops tonight and I didn't mention to bring it. And some of the cells, when we get into our spreadsheets, are a little hard to see. So that's for your use. And we'll pull the presentation up here for Cecilia's recording. And Peggy, I'm just going to slide over to that seat if you don't mind, so I can.
Sean, are you, are you up there? Do you have the video? Can you see it?
Which one is? B? Thank you.
Jen, do you want me to hold the, does he need to see the?
You know what happens is that the, there's too much glare. So he doesn't actually, he can't actually see it. And usually, I forgot to bring my little phone holder.
What if, you want to put it on, like, here?
So I'm just going to have him look at Phil. We were trying to have him watch the live stream.
Oh.
But it's not quite working.
Okay.
So as we go through this evening's presentation, as I mentioned it, following the, we're following the process that we've followed in previous years, some of which is required by law, which is, and part of tonight's is, which is to present the beginning of the administrative and capital components of the budget, as well as what we anticipate as the, a second proposition, which would be included in May's, in May's budget vote. And as a, as a starting point, as you're aware, before we have state aid figures from New York State, we usually are just providing an overview of the admin and capital components up to this point, our actual spending in previous years and what we have budgeted for this school year and what we're beginning to anticipate as our projected final cost for this school year. As we discussed last month, we are moving away from the rollover budget column, which you would have seen in previous years, because we believe that the information that we get really in these, in the next month or two are more helpful to us in our actual budget planning and finalizing those figures. So in lieu of providing just a rollover amount, we're going to provide you with what we believe, where we believe we will come in this school year. And then you use those figures as a basis of the budgeting process that we're now in internally as we finalize the educational plan and budget to present to you in March. Okay? And the move that we had made, I believe, two years ago was to not just enter into these presentations as if we're informing the board, because the board has a high level of background experience now with budget development, but to also organize this, these documents in a way that any community member who may at any point decide to go in and want to learn more about the budget development process, that they contain the necessary amount of information for a community member to do so. So on this first page, you'll see just an overview of some of the key categories and what those categories include within the budget line items. So I'll give you a moment just to look through these on your, on your paper or slide deck here to reorient yourselves.
This is so great because every year, even though we know what, that the Board of Education isn't getting paid the 40 grand or whatever the line item is, I always make sure to ask. Anne, could you tell the bullet public?
Yes.
So I appreciate the definitions. I think that that's helpful.
And as we get into this next figure, and I understand it may not be hard to see on our screen here, so that's why you have it in front of you. You can refer back to the definitions if needed. So I'll give you a moment just to digest the figures that we're showing here. We're looking back three years on the actual spending in each of these areas, what we budgeted for 2021, which is the year we're currently in, and what we anticipate as our projected costs by the conclusion of this school year.
So coming in under on basically everything except instructional, instructional administration?
Correct. And if you have any key figures that you want to discuss, or if you see a shift in a particular area, and again, there's only two, two decks, if you will, that we're going to be providing this evening with figures on them. Anne and I went through all of these over the last two days just to make sure we were ready to explain any significant variance that you see from budgeted to projected, or from one year to the next, if you're wondering why, you know, in 1819, we spent in a certain area and why we saw an increase or a decrease in the years that followed. We, we should be able to explain this to you this evening.
Just while we're on it, what's the projected decrease on the, the projected increase or over-budget on instructional admin?
Anne, do you want to come up to the microphone just so we can get it?
Would you repeat that, please?
That's okay. On budget, 2021 budget to 2021 projected on the instructional administration line, that seems to be the only one that's up. Everything else is down, which is lovely that we're coming in under, under budget and saving, saving some over time. Any detail on that that's, that's able to share in public?
Right, those are from, let me see, let me check this. I have my own legend on my notes here, so. So from 2021 budget to the projected, instructional administration also includes professional development.
Yep.
So there were some increases this year because we, there were some things, if you look up in the Board of Education line and the staff line where we're under, those are under in the BOSI's category.
Okay.
And there was a shift so that we were able to do some more things with professional development in, on the instructional administration line.
Okay, got it. So is it, and obviously, this is a year when we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for.
Right, there's a lot of opportunity out there at this time for a lot of online. There's just every day that you look, the list gets longer of what's available, different opportunities for instruction.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Anne, the increase from 1819 to 1920 on the Board of Education line is about $10,000. Should I assume that's because of the mail-in, the budget vote?
The Board of Education line?
Yeah.
There was a very large increase in the district meeting in facilitating that.
Yeah.
Also included in that, excuse me, was the demographic study that was done that year, and that would be coded under the Board of Education function.
Gotcha, thank you.
And we include at the bottom, just for community reference more so than anything, what percentage of the total budget that the, these components comprise? So $2.8 million in total, we have a $25 million budget, it equates to roughly 11% of the total budget. Should we move on to capital?
Yes.
Okay. So again, this is an overview of each of the functions within the capital component of the budget. And then you'll see the expenditure.
So this is the budget protection, the budget to projected for operations and maintenance, that's, a lot of that's COVID cleaning, infrastructure. If we're buying shielding, is that in there? Okay.
Yes, it is.
Yep, all those.
All of the supplies and materials and, I guess, renovations that we had to do, whether they're stickers or on the floor, or signs, or the Plexiglas.
Okay.
And how did that money come back through FEMA grants or anything?
Not as of yet, we do not.
But we'll put in for it. Is that projected that the schools will get that back?
If we're given the opportunity to submit expenditures, we have those all separated so that we identify them.
So there's a chance that number will come down?
There's a chance. Very slim.
I don't sense a lot of hope.
Hope springs eternal. And I assume that, like, from the actual to the, from the actual last year to the budget this year, you obviously increased it significantly. Part of that was in anticipation of this to begin with, right?
Right, so if there was another column there that showed budget for 1920?
Yep.
It would be somewhere between the actual and, the actual of 1920 and the budget for 2021. What happened is we came under for 1920.
Yep.
Because it, we weren't open, so the operating expenses were less. And that got shifted into 2021 because of all of the extra things that we had to do.
Got it.
So we were under budget for 1920, which you're not seeing the budget figure there, but we're over for 2021, but remember, it's because we brought that, those funds forward.
And I'll go way back in history. Any, like, inter-fund transfers in 1718? I know that a lot of it is, ends up being school lunch, and we do, were we doing something different that year?
For inter-fund transfers for 1718?
Do you know?
That is, we had some fund balance that we sent some to the capital fund. If you notice, you go one line up for debt service, and you see the big jump in debt service.
Yep.
That was the year that we used the land sale reserve fund. We brought that in from the reserve fund because we paid down a bond anticipation note for the turf field. It was in its fifth year, so we bonded.
Yep.
And so that money had to be brought into the general fund from the reserve fund.
Okay.
And so the year before, we were funding the reserve, not just the land sale reserve, but the capital reserve.
Okay.
And that's a transfer out.
Okay, got it. Cool.
Okay. And as, every year, we examine our vehicles and the need to replace certain vehicles, and you're familiar with the schedule that we're typically on with this, we do anticipate replacing one school bus, or making, including a second proposition, which would include the replacement of one school bus, and two minivans for next school year. And I believe our board, for any community member who may be watching, is familiar with the debt schedule and how we finance this. These tend to be tax neutral, or very close to tax neutral propositions, but allow our fleet to stay up to date. So that's something we anticipate including.
Remind me, how big is our fleet-ish?
We have six minivans, one car. I think we have, we have, I don't know what the breakdown is, but between the large buses and the medium yellow vans.
Yeah.
Which is not what we're talking about here, it's 18.
Okay, okay.
These, the minivans that we're proposing to replace this up and coming year are the small five-passenger.
Okay.
We're about 200,000 miles on, and we get so much mileage out of them and save a lot on fuel.
Yeah.
And then next year, Tim and I developed a three-year plan for the next three years. We know what we're going to be asking for, for the vehicle propositions. It's heavy on the minivans because they're, they get so much use.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I saw one going out this morning. Actually, which is a question, why do we have a bus go out this morning?
We're still, so there could be for one of, a couple of reasons, we're still doing meal service. So this potential, we were providing meals to a family, just trying to think of vehicle. But we also are responsible for still transporting some special needs students.
Oh, got it, got it.
To their particular schools, those schools may be in session, and we're still providing it.
Got it, makes sense.
And those buses, I don't, I mean, I don't know if this was the case, but we, there's also, I mean, at least in the past, we're also, we've also bused students who attend private schools within a particular range. Which is why, because it sounds like a lot of vehicles for a small district, but I think it's, this is an opportunity to remind the public that it's not just bringing students back and forth to Haldane, it's students that go to BOSI's, special needs students who go to, you know, out-of-district placements, and then our multiple responsibilities to bus families who send their children to private school, but the private school's within a particular range. That remains our responsibility.
And I believe the range for private schools is, is it 30 miles? I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
This is like trivial pursuit of school board.
That's still an acronym.
But we also has to have to have a couple of spares, because some get taken out of service for inspection, or if they're down for a repair, so we do have to take care of those.
Or not just sports, but all extracurricular activities. A lot of responsibilities, yeah.
In some sort of way. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Anne. Thanks, Dr. Benantay.
Yeah, so I think the next presentation is scheduled to be special education, if I'm not mistaken. Will be our next presentation, budget presentation, which is, you know, slightly different in a way it's constructed, obviously. So Tara will be prepared to provide that overview for the board at our next budget workshop.
That's always tricky timing-wise, though, because don't you guys do like, I don't know what they're called, the reviews or?
Annual reviews.
Is that what it is? The annual reviews where you decide what kids might need next year, but you don't do that till later?
Correct, so.
In the budgeting process.
It's probably one of the more complicated components of the budget development process and the most, where we're working most with projections, because the annual review process will go all the way up until June. So as you know, we've already voted on a budget by that time. So for the most part, the majority of our students with special needs, we can anticipate the level of support that's going to be required year over year. It doesn't typically dramatically shift from one year to the next, but what, especially in a smaller school district, I think it's more complicated. In a big district, things kind of tend to level out over the course of, you know, what could be hundreds or up to 1,000 students that have such services. But in our district, you know, we could have one student who's placed in an out-of-district placement at a significant cost that could really be the equivalent of a full-time teacher. So we try to anticipate and facilitate those annual reviews first. So we're aware of that going, as aware as we can be in the budget development process. But for a variety of factors, those meetings sometimes don't occur until later and can get in the way or end up with a dramatically different figure than what we may have presented to the board in January or February as compared to where we are, or what we're realizing in June, and quite frankly, an annual review could occur in July and August as well. You could have a student move into the district as well. So, so yes, of all the presentations you will have, that one is the, is probably one that's, can be, I hesitate to use the word speculative, but we are trying to be very deliberate with how we, how we project those, those needs and what the costs will be.
And remind me, there was not a special reserve established for that. That was a potential, but it did not happen, right? By law, it was not enabled, and therefore, we didn't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any communication from the public at this time? No. Our wellness committee minutes from December 14th are here for review. Information reports are also here for review. And we're going into consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
These are the minutes from December 15th. That seems like a million years ago. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda financial, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion?
I have just a quick question, it's something just I didn't notice until today when I was looking at it again. And it could be one of those trivia questions. On the list, there's a couple of things in the budget transfer that you say it says "not required" under approval status. What is our amount that is required? I thought it was 10,000 that it required board approval for budget transfer. What's the number? It says "not required" under approval status.
In the November report?
In the November report. And it's stuff we would approve, it's the, you know, the extension of the athletic director because we didn't get a new athletic director. But under approval status, it says "not required." And one of them is 10, 10,000, which I thought was the number, but one is 12 and one is 15.
Conversation about it is 30,000?
Is 30?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'm not picturing the document that you're looking at.
I have it open, do you want to look?
If you don't mind me coming up.
No, not at all.
But if it's 30, then that's.
That makes complete sense.
It's 30, but I think that that "not required" means that we don't require that field to be filled in.
Oh, see, it says it under approval status.
Right.
I thought it meant board, board approval, not required.
Now, this is a budget transfer schedule, and we could use that column if we want.
But it's not on all of them. See, some of them don't have it.
But that's part of number 728, so if you had that, go back up if you would, please. See, 728 says "not required" there. It's not going to list it for the whole thing, because this is one.
It's only going to list it for the individual one. So that column isn't required, that doesn't have anything to do with the board approving it?
Correct.
Got it.
Because you are approving it when you look at, you're really approving everything when you look at the budget transfer.
Right, right, so it's, but it doesn't have to do with the 10 or 15,000 numbers. That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Old business, our mid-year self-evaluation. This is just here for John to remind us of what we're doing.
Thank you very much, and remind me to send everybody the content. So we are self-assessing on the, on the key five standards. I can never remember the standards versus the protocols. What's the other ones?
Standards.
No, but the five standards, and then there are five, under each standard, there are five action items, or five objectives or something. You did, I did not send it out, so I owe it to everyone. We're going to do that over the course of the next couple of weeks, because Jen is out next time, and we're going to reconvene on February, the first meeting in February to do a top-line review of what we, of what you suggested to me, so.
The standards are the buckets, and the practices are what's in the buckets.
So we're only doing it at the standard level.
Standard level.
Yeah.
And you're going to send the board an email?
I'll send it to you as soon as I get home.
With the information, and any sort of deadline that you would like?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay. New business, the CSE CPSC placement recommendations, Ms. Platt?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the committees on special education and preschool special education as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The approval of the memorandum of agreement between this Board of Education and the CSEA. Ms. Platt?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the supplemental memorandum of agreement between the Haldane Board of Education and the Civil Service Employees Association dated January 5th, 2021, related to furloughs during the pendency of the COVID-19 pandemic state of emergency, and authorizes the superintendent to sign the agreement on behalf of the district.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Dr. Benantay, do you want to?
I alluded to this, I believe, during our December meeting, that we were perhaps entering into a period of time where into a period of time where, when students are not in session, that it doesn't necessitate, that we had employees whose titles are dependent or tied to students being in school each day, that we'd be seeking their approval to utilize some of those unit members in other capacities that are outside of their title. Our CSEA was wonderful to work with on this and resolving it, and I think of mutual benefit. We don't have to go into a position of considering furloughing employees, and I think the boards, what the boards trust, that we have meaningful work to keep individuals engaged during such times that we've been in for the last week, or are in this week, and the preceding days prior to the holiday break, and in case we come upon it such a time again in the, in the weeks or months to come, we know we have that flexibility, and I think that's a great thing.
Yeah, I think Mr. Walsh was visibly excited to have some extra hands.
I'll tell you, Mr. Walsh has quite the list of projects that he has prepared to work through, so everybody's been very busy.
Okay.
And it's great, but it's great we can have that, and, and, you know, can, can do that, because so many districts are just so strapped, that, you know, we, we really, like, it's hard, but we are, I can't get over how fortunate we are.
A lot of, a lot of things, and I, I still, with something like this, go back as well to decisions that the board made and the community made to support our budget last school year, you know, as Anne was referring to in, in one of the figures on our budget presentation, where, of course, we're spending more in maintenance and operation right now to keep our schools clean, and to go through advanced protocols for such, so it all, I think it all ties together, and, but no, thank you, Peggy, I think, you know, noting that is important, we are very fortunate. Absolutely, and you see what else is occurring in other communities.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any communication from the public? No? Please, Anne?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Thank you.
There you go. She phoned a friend.
Yeah, I didn't think it was 30. 15 miles from...
Anne said, Lord's is right on the end of it, and I'm like, how far is Lord's from here? It's got to be 15, but I'm 30, and Lord's isn't that far from me, so, it's the way the crow flies.
Any board reflections? Any superintendent final thoughts?
It's great to see everyone again. Happy New Year, and no further thoughts. Thank you, Jen.
Okay, and then I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.